Thou shows to us each and every day grateful that we can meet together and pray for thy guidance and direction, help us to recognize the needs of this community that we get to serve. And we pray for our love and direction always in these things we say in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. If everyone's had a chance to look at the agenda, we'll take a motion to approve it.
So move.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any conflicts of interest to declare for any members of the planning commission for anything on the agenda tonight? Having heard none, I'm going to move on to a period of public comment. It's an opportunity for the public to come out and comment on anything. Seeing no one raise their hand or show any interest, we can move from public comment onto item number one on our agenda.
Susan Hinks is requesting an extension to her final plat approval for her subdivision. They've been waiting for materials and snow to go away. They're planning on starting the construction of the street in the spring. This is for the Oakavens subdivision.
So they want an extension until when? Should we do it to a definite date and then try and extend it?
I would extend it for six months. We are planning on bringing forward the text amendment for the final plat expiration to increase that. So if that gets approved by the planning commission, county commission, then it won't affect them as well as hoped.
So that would be July 13th?
Or would you say six months, just a six-month extension?
Is that an offer? Do you want to do it till a meeting?
I would just do six-month extension.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I move to postpone item number one to allow for a six-month extension.
Second?
Well, it would be to just approve the extension instead of postponing.
Oh, to approve it? That's what I said.
I'll still second that.
So to clarify the motion, there's a motion to approve the extension, the six-month extension for the Oakavens subdivision on a second. All those in favor of that motion?
Aye.
Motion passes. See, back in the day, we would have made, you know, we made a motion to rescind a motion.
Yeah.
We've matured. Onto item number two, legislative discussion.
Yep, so how do I feel is the code text amendment to increase the time that a final plat approval is allowed from six months to two years with the ability to extend it for one more year after that? What I wasn't aware of is that there's a second code section that affects final plats as well, and we need to amend the text there as well. I did not include that second section in the notifications. So what I'm asking for is that we continue this without a date certain because I'm going to have to renotice the entire thing anyway. So if we could continue it, I'll bring it back in March.
So a motion to...
I would just say a motion to continue.
All right, Mr. Chair, approve. Ask, I ask thee.
That's not, that's not a motion though.
Yeah.
So the motion is make a motion to continue item number two until a meeting in March, allowing staff to renotice and include the second code section.
Would you postpone it definitely?
No, if you postponed it indefinitely, you would need to have, you would need to make a motion for it to be canceled.
Motion definitely, definitely. Should we make a motion to...
Postpone it till March?
Definitely. Or do we even need to make a motion because this is just, you're going to renotice it?
That's true.
And that was the point I was going to make. If we're going to renotice everything, then we don't even have to put it to a date certain or a date uncertain because the public will, they don't need to know from this public meeting because they'll get a renotice anyway.
So are we good just to agree that, just bring this back out when you notice it?
I'll bring it back out for now.
It's easy.
Sounds good. Sometime in May, you said?
No, it better be before that. I've got other things together.
Good evening, Garrett.
Hi.
Hi, how are you?
Good. How are you?
I'm good. Thanks for coming out.
Yeah, good to be here.
Always good to see you. So we're going to do open meeting training? That's the next item on our agenda?
Is that the plan?
Yep, that's it.
Okay. And so I'm going to just send out a highlighted copy of the Open and Public Meetings Act. I actually, I'm not sure if we had talked about it before or after it had been scheduled, but I gave it on Tuesday as well to the county commission. And it's just part of, as it says in subsection 52-4104, training, it does require an annual training on any, for any public body. And so this would fulfill that requirement.
Okay.
And I can pull it up there as well. You can go to the team.
Sure.
It's still up there, so if you scroll back up to the top. All right. So as we go through, this can be kind of interactive. If you have questions, if I'm going too slow, then tell me to speed it up. If I'm going too fast, then tell me to slow down. But hopefully you can get through it a little quicker than on Tuesday. So I did highlight that portion in 52-4-102 just to talk about the intent of the legislature is for transparency. And so it wants political subdivisions like we are to take their actions openly and conduct their deliberations openly so that the public can be involved and understand what's going on as much as possible. That doesn't mean that you can't discuss things outside of a public meeting under the restrictions that follow. But even if you kind of know what you're going to do in a certain meeting, it's good to talk about how you got to that decision and make some findings and put it on the record. And so we'll talk a little bit more about that as well. So the next thing, if we go down into the definition section, and if you'll go down to public body, this is on page two, sub nine. So when it's talking about a public body, it says, "Any administrative, advisory, executive, or legislative body of the state or its political subdivision." And so this one, especially, so you are the land use authority for certain things in our code, not just an advisory or, and so, or a body. So you fall into that category. But then the other four says, "Is created by Utah Constitution, statute, rule, ordinance, or resolution, consists of two or more persons, expands disperses, or is supported in full or in part by tax revenue, and is vested with the authority to make decisions regarding the public's business." And so for purposes of this definition, the planning commission is considered a public body. Even though maybe you don't have as many functions that the county commission has, you still have final say on certain decisions and your advisory to the county commission on those, those that you don't have final say on. So if you go back up to, oh, sorry, actually, let's go down one more to page three, 11. It just defines the quorum. So the quorum is a simple majority of the membership of a public body unless otherwise defined by applicable law. And so tonight we have five, so you're one over the, you know, the necessary requirement to hold a meeting. Now we can go back up to page one. So convening means the calling together of a public body by a person authorized to do so for the express purpose of discussing or acting upon a subject over which that public body has jurisdiction or advisory power. And like we said before, some, you do have jurisdiction over some things like small subdivisions or C2, CUPs. And you also have advisory power to make recommendations to the commission. We go down to six. So meeting means the convening of a public body with a quorum present, including a workshop or an executive session, whether in person or by means of electronic communications for the purpose of discussing, receiving comments from the public about or acting upon a matter over which the public body has jurisdiction or advisory power. This sometimes comes up to say, well, what if we're all at the fair? What if we're all at the Lincoln Day dinner and, you know, we end up all together? So under sub B, meeting does not mean a chance gathering or social gathering. Right? And we'll get later on where you can't use a chance social gathering as an excuse to conduct business. So there's limitations on that. But you wouldn't be in trouble if you just kind of all ran into each other at Ridley's or wherever it was. All right. And then I do have a question. I know sometimes the commission will have administrative meetings. Does the planning commission ever have those? So it's really just these planning commission meetings here that are public and noticed and all of that?
We've never, yeah, we've had work sessions. We've always noticed them.
But you still notice it? Yeah, okay. So I, you know, subsection C, it does allow for an exception saying this is also not a meeting, but I don't think it applies as much here as it might to the county commission. So, okay. And then page three, we did already talk about the training, but the presiding officer, which would be the chair, Chair Ross, shall ensure that the members of the public body are provided with annual training on the requirements of this chapter. So that's what we're doing here tonight. And then if we go to page four, if you're in doubt, just think it's probably going to be an open meeting. And to err on the side of caution there. And so the meeting is open to the public unless it's closed under those subsections 52-4, 204, 205, and 206. And I don't attend these meetings as much, but have you ever gone into a closed session as a planning commission since you've been here? Okay.
I didn't think they were allowed to go in a closed session.
Well, it would depend on, I think if there was a reason that you could close it and it was something that you had authority over, potentially you could.
There's maybe a potential litigation?
Right, to discuss, yeah.
We were the land use authority of.
Right, yeah. So if you're going to talk about pending or reasonably imminent litigation that you are the land use authority on, final say on, then we may close it. You could close it for that. Typically though, even one that I'm thinking off the top of my head that was a small subdivision that's in litigation, typically that's still discussed by the county commission at this point, and I just give updates to them. But it's something that could be closed because you are a public body, but you don't have jurisdiction over who to hire, you know. So to talk about the character of professional competence of an individual, that's not really an item that you need to close a session for because you don't have that authority or jurisdiction over those decisions or even advisory power. All right. So under subsection 2B, I just highlighted the part that says it's only held at the location where the public body is holding the regularly scheduled public meetings. There are some exceptions to that, but, you know, as we've discussed, you're pretty, the planning commission is pretty easy to count on that you'll be here and that these are the only meetings that are happening for the most part, at least right now.
We have got on the road.
Oh, okay.
We held a meeting at...
I don't know, three or four times in the past.
We did one down at...
The elementary school.
Yeah, we did one at Round Valley. We did one...
We did one at that.
Oh, but we also did, we've done site visits as well in the same day as our scheduled meeting.
Kind of like, yeah.
Okay, so as long as you do that, you just have to notice it under these exceptions, right? So the first one, the workshop or executive session is held at the location where the public body holds its regularly scheduled public meetings. But for that day, the regularly scheduled public meeting is being held in a different location. Any of the meetings held on the same day is a site visit or traveling tour and in accordance with this chapter, public notice is given. So if you did do a traveling tour, there's different requirements as far as, you know, keeping minutes and even recording it if you do take a vote or take some specific action. So there are some exceptions there. And yeah, if there's ever any question, you can always refer back to the code or reach out to me if you are going to go somewhere else. All right, so the next section, 52-4202, is the notice requirements. And not so much for the planning commission. This is more for Josh in his office to make sure that the notices get out. And McKeller, you're kind of handling that too a little bit, right? So you're just posting the agenda, date, time, and place. And I know we did this for the county commission. This is under subsection 2A. So a public body which holds regular meetings that are scheduled in advance over the course of a year shall give public notice at least once each year if its annual meeting schedule is provided in this section. So has that been done for the planning commission as well?
Yeah, we did that for the last meeting.
Yeah. So that's good. Let's see. And then, yeah, follows the same requirements there. In subsection three, and this is probably more for McKell and the planning department, but so a public body satisfies a requirement for public notice by posting the written notice at the principal office of the public body, so here at the county, and then also on the public, the Utah Public Notice website. And then it's also a requirement providing notice to at least one newspaper of general circulation within the geographic jurisdiction of the public body or a local media correspondent. And then in the next section, it talks about, you know, the newspaper, local media correspondent under provisions of subsection 63A. And there, as long as there's a local media correspondent that is getting those automatic notices from the Utah Public Notice website, it satisfies that requirement. And so I don't know, I know that the county isn't necessarily posting it in more incoming news. They're relying upon that section. And I don't know if that's the same way that the planning does it.
We've been posting the legislative items to the more incoming newspaper, but our code doesn't require that for administrative items.
Right, and this is just, this is just notice of the meeting. There's more strict requirements on public, like legislative items where it's not 24 hours in advance. It's like 10 days.
Yeah.
But as far as just the regular 24-hour notice, just posting it on the Utah Public Notice website.
And that means the agenda, to post the agenda on it.
Yeah, as long as there's a local media correspondent that's getting those automatic messages, then it satisfies that requirement.
Do you know if our papers receiving those, automatic notices, or should they just email the paper?
Well, I know that, I know that they were when I went over this with Leslie, and I'm trying to remember if that was before or after more incoming news switched. So I'll follow up with Leslie. I'm remembering it was pretty recent, and I think the switch, has that been like four or five months now? Or am I off on that? So I think we've had since then to confirm, but I had that same thought on Tuesday, but I'll follow up with Leslie. So under subsection 5A, do any of you recall having an emergency meeting since you've been here with the planning commission?
Nope.
Yeah, there's only one county commission meeting I can think of that was an emergency meeting since I've been here for a COVID update, so that probably doesn't apply. But you could call one if it was necessary. You just have to make an attempt to notify everyone on the planning commission and get approval of at least a majority to approve that meeting. And then you'd also have to give as much notice as practicable to the public to call that meeting. This one's kind of interesting. So for Chair Ross, if, you know, sometimes the public may bring up a topic that isn't on the agenda, but you may want to explore that topic. And I think in the past, when I wasn't reading this very carefully, I was like, oh, well, if it's not on the agenda, we can't really talk about it except during the public comment. But under 6B, it says, "Subject to the provisions of subsection 6C, and at the discretion of the presiding member of the public body, the topic raised by the public may be discussed during an open meeting even if the topic raised by the public was not included in the agenda or advanced public notice for the meeting." So you have the discretion to talk about it, but the limitation in the next section is saying you can't take final action on that topic.
And I think we're good there. So what we do is, we always have an agenda item for business questions for staff. And if the public brings something up that we feel like we want to talk about, we'll bring it up and then we'll ask for, hey, could we put this on the agenda, notice it? And then we'll, we would never make a decision on that. And we would just note this was brought up, et cetera. So I think that covers the attempt.
And so you do have the discretion, if you do want to entertain a discussion, maybe more than you would otherwise. My only, my only suggestion on that would be have some sort of criteria of, you know, why would we consider this instead of just noticing it for the next meeting? Is there something specific here? Is there a criteria that we're following so that it doesn't look like you're picking and choosing based on who's presenting the topic to say, well, every time so-and-so brings up a topic, we're okay to talk about it, but anyone up there, you know, if they're going to come up, we're just going to shut it down. We don't want it to look like that. So just having and putting it on the record to say, well, this wasn't on the agenda, but we are going to spend 10 minutes discussing it and then just make some, some basic findings or some reasons for that to justify and kind of set the precedence of why you may entertain a non-negotiable. All right, so on to 52-4-203. This is more for McKell, you know, taking the minutes. But the written minutes of an open meeting should include the date, time, place of the meeting, names of members present and absent, substance of all matters proposed, discussed, or decided by the public body, which may include a summary of comments made by members of the public body. And then this one, subsection four, is something that we had noticed the county commission wasn't doing exactly. And I haven't looked at enough minutes from the planning commission with this in mind to recall. But it does say, "A record by individual member of each vote taken by the public body." You know, a lot of times in the county commission, we just say the vote was unanimous without saying by individual member. I think, you know, as far as outlining it, it gives a little more, so if we go on to page six, a little bit further down to subsection C, gives a little more clarity here. It says, "A public body that has members who were..." So actually, never mind, this wouldn't apply to you because you're not elected or disappointed. So strike what I was just saying. Sorry about that.
I think for the most part, we meet that anyway, but...
Okay. Yeah, if you were elected, then it would have to be in list format, category with yes, no, absent, by name for every vote that you take.
I see.
But since you're not elected, I don't think you have to follow that requirement. All right. Let's go ahead and jump. Okay, let's go to the bottom of page seven. So since you said that, you know, you have been a site visit before. So subsection seven says, "Notwithstanding subsection one," which is saying what's required for the minutes, "A recording is not required to be kept of in an open meeting, visited, or traveled for if no vote or action is taken by the public body." So if you're just visiting a site and going around, you don't have to record that. If you're planning to take a vote or action at that site visit, then you have to record the entire site visit. All right. The next, I think, are less relevant because it's regarding the closed meetings, which from your recollection, you haven't done. So unless there's any specific question, I'll probably just skip those next sections.
Sounds good.
Okay, on page 13, it does talk about the electronic meetings, which I haven't participated in since I've been here, but when I was presenting on Tuesday, Debbie, you might have been the one to say that the commission has done electronic meetings during COVID. And did the planning commission do the same?
We did, yeah.
So we've adopted the ordinance. It is, you know, available if needed to hold those electronic meetings. But I do think, you know, the way that you're conducting them right now is probably more transparent to the public so that they know where to be and that they can stop in without having to look for a meeting.
Have we ever had a complete electronic meeting? I thought at least one or two of us were here.
We were here. There was like two. Both you and I were here. And everyone else was...
With the COVID, you did?
Uh huh.
Yeah.
This is the anchor location, but then everyone to join electronic.
Which at the time was consistent with our own bylaws and ordinance.
Yeah.
So it looks like it was consistent with this as well. When the intent was, if we're here, let's try and, just in case anybody shows up and we can socially distance them or whatever at that time.
Yeah.
Boy, I hate saying that word again.
Bring that back.
Strike that.
Awesome, okay. So page 14, this is that exception, right? So doesn't apply to chance or social, a chance meeting or social meeting. But subsection two, "A chance meeting or social meeting may not be used to circumvent the provisions of this chapter." So not that you would, but don't be sneaky and start trying to chat about things if you've got four or more of you there. Let me go to page 16 now, so this is part three, enforcement. The, so typically if we think there's a hot topic item, you know, we may invite a law enforcement officer to be present just in case, but it does allow removal if someone is willfully disrupting the meeting that the order of conduct is seriously compromised. So that is an option. In 52-4-302, it talks about lawsuits can be filed to challenge a final action. And so if you were to, you know, make a final action here and one of the provisions that we've gone over, the notice, the minutes, something wasn't followed, then that action could be voided by the court if someone challenged that. And so that's part of the reason why we want to review this and make sure we follow everything so that, you know, we don't undo the work that's done here. The next page, section 52-4-303, it just acknowledges that the attorney general and county attorneys of the state shall enforce this chapter. The next section after that, 304, well, this applies to the closed meeting, so we don't need to go over that here. And then just the last section there is 52-4-305. "The criminal penalty for a closed meeting violation is a class P misdemeanor, which, you know, can, you could be in jail up to six months and fines of up to a thousand dollars." And I don't think that our counties had too many issues with that recently, but I do know that two other counties have been in the news as of late where people are claiming that they're not following this and they're considering criminal action. So hopefully we never get to that point, but that is a basic overview of the Open and Public Meetings Act.
Excellent. That was, that was way better than to do it electronic again.
Yep.
How many did you, what was our time?
Uh, pretty quick.
Yeah, a lot faster.
Yeah, that's awesome.
Yeah, it was really good. Thank you.
So one of the, um, let me get back to the other one, sorry. One of the things that we had talked about, as long as you're here, Garrett, is in the previous months, we've had some discussions about the term reasonable. Is there, you have some time while you're here to kind of just walk us through that again and remind us?
I do. Yeah, so let me pull up a couple notes. So it seems like there's been a lot of, you know, a lot of stuff coming through lately and I know Josh was hoping I'd be here at the next meeting for, you know, a potential CUP coming through. I'll be out of town. And so that's why he wanted me to come now and kind of talk through it. But as far as the conditional use and what's reasonable, when the courts look at it, they, what the case law shows is a reasonable condition. They they look at how it's been applied to other like activities. So for example, a recent one is the Wilkinson CUP. And there is, there have been a lot of involvement from residents, you know, and being concerned about certain conditions. And one of the conditions that was placed on it dealt with like a land dispute between the neighbors as far as access and things of that nature. So if it deals with like health, safety, welfare, so the the spring and whether it could damage the spring and cause issues or contamination with the water source, that's where the county can step in and it's reasonable that we can restrict that. But as far as saying, you know, we have to make sure that there's an easement over everyone's property coming and going, that is, that's a civil matter between the two property owners. Because believe it or not, that happens a lot in our county. There's a lot of border or boundary disputes. And if we jumped in, if the county were to jump in and enforce that or try to enforce it, we'd be inundated. And secondly, we don't have the authority to enforce a boundary dispute or a prescriptive easement or to enlarge the scope of a prescriptive easement or to say that no prescriptive easement exists. Because that's up to a court of competent jurisdiction that has a final say on those type of, what they call quiet title actions, where these neighbors can, you know, figure out between them what the the dispute is and and where the boundary is or what's the scope of the easement or whether the easement even exists. So does that make sense with?
It does. Did we, on that particular one, I cannot, I can't remember. We, I don't think we put a condition on that. We just said.
Yeah, we did.
In the spring, we did.
No, there was the other one.
The two, yeah.
There were two conditions. Yeah, sorry.
So I had said in the meaning that that's that's a civil matter between property.
Yeah, I do remember that, but I I thought the intent of our discussion was to say, we were making a recommendation to the county council, and I think the recommendation was that they didn't.
No, you were the decision maker.
Oh, were we?
Because that was a C two application. And I think it's worked out okay because I I did talk to the the property owner that was concerned about that and explained what the county could and couldn't do. And and they were very understanding and saying, yeah, we agree with that. We're more concerned about these conditions. And and so it it worked out okay. But if, you know, if a condition like that were placed on an applicant and they appealed it, it's likely that that, you know, we we would lose. Because they'd say, well, that's not a reasonable condition because that's not something the county could control and has jurisdiction to determine a quiet title type action.
Quiet title. Can you expand on that a little bit?
Yeah, so like a quiet title is is an action that's filed to determine property ownership or boundaries. So have you heard of adverse possession, for example, right? And so if someone is adversely possessing a property, they're paying taxes, they do it for seven years, a statutory period. It doesn't just mean that now the title's in their name, they can't just go record a deed. They actually have to file a quiet title action with the court. And then the court is the one that determines whether they've fulfilled or met the elements for adverse possession. Prescriptive easement, right? That that's a twenty-year use in Utah. And it has similar things with adverse possession, this open hostel, you know, you've got all of these elements that are met. Now, the court's going to look at that and say, has it really been open and notorious? Has it been continuous? And they'll be the fact finder to determine whether a prescriptive easement exists or not. And if they find that it exists, but it's only been used for farm equipment, then they can't expand it to, you know, other things that would go beyond the scope of what it's historically been used for, unless the use that they're, you know, the the one wanting to expand it, if that's been used that way for twenty years and they can prove that, then it would be an expanded use. But it's just the name of of the action. And I don't know why they call it quiet title. I can't remember.
So it's simple matters, civil matters that the county has no authority to impose any restrictions on.
Yeah. We don't have the final say or jurisdiction to determine property boundary, scope of an easement, those types of things, because that's up to the judicial branch.
So just asking clarifying questions. I'm like, I'm trying to try and give some some good examples.
Maybe talk a little bit about the upcoming CUP without naming the upcoming CUP and kind of talk a little bit about reasonable with regards to noise and use of property.
Okay, so, well, and and maybe before I go there, I'll, I'll, I'll finish on the current CUP that we've been discussing. Because there there was some, I didn't think that there was a lot of ambiguity in in what was said at the meeting when I went and listened through it. But when I called everyone who was present there and each of you said, no, it only applied to, you know, this, I think being able to make findings and put them on the record of why, why are we, why do we think this is reasonable? And so if we're going to put a condition that says, you know, three trucks an hour, twenty mile an hour speed limit and no trucks running during pickup and drop off, you know, those types of things, say, well, this only applies to hardscrabble. And we think that it's reasonable because hardscrabble is this narrow. When there's snow, there's really not a lot of give, you know, those types of things that I think everyone was thinking and and maybe hearing throughout the meeting. But when you're making your findings, you want to cite back to that so that there is a reasonable relation of why you're putting those restrictions on. Because otherwise, an applicant might say, well, do you require this of this gravel pit? Or or this, you know, where there's trucks running on these roads? Are you limiting the amount of time? Are you limiting, you know, during school? Because reasonable, it's, is everyone treated equal to, you know, or like are the same, are we being consistent in how we're applying these restrictions? And not saying that you can't restrict it more than others that are doing similar activities. You just have to justify it and say, well, it's because of the conditions in this specific area. And and then it can be reasonable and it's less likely to be challenged and, you know, accounting to to have an illegal condition or unreasonable condition or, you know, even liability if there's delay or damage or some other thing that results from the condition. So I did want to just throw that out to, just so as as you're coming to the final and you're putting it on the record, you're you're putting the findings on the record specifically as findings, even if a lot of those things have already been said during this discussion, you want it to be part of the the final decision.
I think what that might look like is like, so if as we're finishing up our discussion and we have a good idea where we're headed for a motion, maybe we could say, okay, so where are we at with potential conditions we've discussed so far? And then we would just add the, we would add the why, well, you know, we recommend, we we think this is a reasonable condition and the findings for this would be this. And then you would record that. Would, that'd be a good place to say.
Yeah, it's kind of just a summary because you might have had all these ideas and you might have said things that you don't want to be findings, you know, in during the discussion. And so that's your chance to kind of boil down to, okay, what is the condition and what's the basis for that condition? And I, you know, I was looking back on one of my letters that I'd I'd written just to to kind of bring the conditional use language. And I think I might, what did I say? Said something about, you know, yeah, a neighbor's want does not necessarily constitute a detrimental effect. So just because a neighbor's bringing it up and and not to discount what they're saying, but it may not be something that under statute or case law is considered a detrimental effect, right? There's, you know, there's always concerns about safety of, you know, kids and and pets and home values and things like that. But that's considerations for any type of development. I think we could always say that there could be. But is that enough to put in a condition that would change anything any differently than on the other side of the county where the same things are going on?
So A twenty feedlots are, are, that's a permitted use, right? So someone comes in and they, I don't, is it, is it permitted or conditionally permitted feedlots? Let's pretend it's a C two. So a feedlot comes in and there's, they want to put the feedlot right next to a residence. Then and the the resident says, well, I don't want a feedlot next to me because it's going to stink and it's detrimental effects, etc. There's no way or reason to mitigate the smell from a feedlot. So would that be an example?
And and are you kind of, is it like the CAFO or the CAFO type?
Concentrated.
Animal feeding operation, yeah.
Just as an example.
Yeah, in in fact, I know that there was some legislation and they were trying to extend it. And if the county adopts an ordinance that says you can do it in these areas, then it could be restricted. But if not, then it's pretty much open.
Yeah, it'd be hard.
And it would be hard to stop it because it's allowed by the state law and we're a political subdivision. And so if the state says you have to allow these in your county and we haven't restricted where those are, then technically, they could try and open it anywhere within the county. And we'd have to say, you know, it's allowed by state law. Are there, are there things that we could do to mitigate those anticipated, reasonably anticipated detrimental effects? Maybe, but it couldn't be stopped, right? Someone's like, well, I just don't want it because of the smell or the value.
Right, yeah.
Well, it's an allowed use. And if it's an allowed use and they bought the property, they also have their property rights. And so then it's just a matter of trying to, you know, see if there's something that could be mitigating about that.
What about that, not a, not a feedlot, but what if there's something that is not an allowed use and they're going in for a CUP?
Not an allowed, oh, okay. So you're saying.
Technically, it's.
Yeah, it is an allowed use.
Conditionally.
Conditionally. You're saying what type of conditions you could put on?
So you're saying like if our code allows it, or no, our code doesn't allow it, and so they're coming in for a CUP?
If the code doesn't allow it, then it's prohibited regardless.
As a CUP.
They could not apply for a CUP because it would have a dash line. So if you look at the list of uses in the zoning ordinance, you'll see a P or you'll see a C, one, C two, C three, or you'll see a dash. And that dash line means it's prohibited. That type of use in that zone is not allowed. So that, those types of uses, they can't even apply for a conditional use permit because it's just not, it's not allowed at all. But if it's got a P or a C, then the use is allowed. Permit means outright. C means conditional. So the state statute says that the negative impacts can be reasonably mitigated. But just because a neighbor says this is an impact, doesn't mean, one, that it has to be mitigated. Or two, prohibited just because they don't want it. There could be some, some condition, some stipulation that you could add on to that conditional use permit that would reasonably mitigate it.
For instance, noise.
Yeah, so noise.
Like giving it a time?
Well, technically, you couldn't really mitigate it based on noise itself because we don't have a noise ordinance, as far as I know.
But she's saying time.
Right, so the stipulation, the negative impact there is if it continues to go on, it it would negatively impact the the residents. So you could add hours of operation. You could add number of times that they're allowed per month or per week or whatever. So there are some stipulations you could put on a conditional use permit that would mitigate that. Because somebody does have a right to use their property and it may be allowed. But for a conditional use permit, the stipulation that you may add on there is, well, it's not outright permitted, it's conditionally permitted. And the condition here is it has to end at this hour. So that would be a valid stipulation. In fact, our conditional use permit section has that as an example.
Is that your question basically?
Yeah, like as well as number of cars in and out or where parking.
So parking spaces, yeah. So parking spaces and.
Parking spaces are are clearly defined in our code. They have a specific width and a specific depth. And then driveway aisles are typically twenty-four feet wide. But none of us are engineers. And so one of the things that you asked the selectees to do was to go to UDOT and get UDOT approval. Well, UDOT required them to submit a traffic impact study to go through their process. So one of the things you can continue to say is, have you got approval from UDOT? Because it's a UDOT road. I mean, that that's a valid question. And you were, you continued it for him to go in and do that research. But if he comes back and a traffic engineer has studied that, they are the expert. They stamp those plans, they're liable according to those plans. And so if the traffic engineer comes back and says, this is the amount of traffic it's going to generate, we don't see negative impacts generated by this traffic through a certain period of time due to the peak traffic or whatever, then technically, an expert has answered those questions.
And you can reasonably rely upon the expert and kind of shift the liability to say, well, you know, what was presented to us is based on this expert opinion. Now, if if someone else did a traffic study and it's kind of the competing experts, then you have the discretion to say, okay, well, which one seems the most reasonable or credible? And I don't know that that would happen here, but.
If that happens, usually it goes to a court and the judge said, gets a third independent contractor to do the study themselves.
I think if it was challenged, you know, i- if it just came here and there were two independent, then you would have to look at it and use your discretion. So once it, once an expert kind of speaks on it, it's nice because it takes the discretion out of your answer. Like, oh, well, we can just rely on this and and they kind of maintain that liability. If there's two competing experts, then the discretion comes back.
If there are two competing experts, I guarantee one of those will challenge.
And then at that point, you can say, well, we made, what's the most reasonable decision that we made based on the information presented? And then one of them challenges, it goes to court and then, you know.
It'll go to a hearings officer first.
The hearing and then, yeah.
The only one I know that was in conflict was the G O.
That's what I was thinking.
Yeah, then the, and then we relied on the county engineers.
The county engineer was the one that.
Was the, was the one to make the calls.
That we relied on.
Yeah.
Right, but what what he's saying is, let's say it comes back, and this could be any conditional use permit. If one, if the client's engineer or the applicant's engineer gets up and says, we've done this study, I've stamped it, this is our determination, and a disgruntled member of the public got their own independent engineer to research it, and came up with a completely different answer, at that point, one of those two is going to challenge any decision you made. Because if you find for the developer, the the resident's going to challenge. If you deny it, then the. you deny it, then the-
Sure. In, in that example, if I remember right, if I'm wrong, but I think there was a, a study done at least five years prior. Then there was a new study done with LIDAR and more in-depth, it's more comprehensive. And that's where the county engineer came out and said he agrees with.
The latest.
Is that right? Isn't that what happened?
In a situation like that, though-
Our county geologist-
County geologist, I'm sorry.
That, I wouldn't even vote on it.
No.
Because, but the problem I've seen is you got two people competing and it's, it's like what we're talking about, it's that liability issue. So you're siding with one here.
No, the problem there is you have an applicant who has paid money, submitted an application and has the right to a reasonable timeframe of receiving or getting an answer. So if you have a C2 that's, that's before you and that's the situation that comes up, you have the ability to say, it's too contentious for us to make the decision. We're going to forward it on to the county commission, they can review it and make the decision.
Yeah.
That's the only way you have to avoid it. Otherwise, you would have to make the decision.
Right. I just think in something like that though-
You could postpone it.
You could postpone it to see if more information came forward.
Or that the county engineer could look it over, especially if it was given to us that night.
Yeah, and the county engineer could maybe give other ideas of what seems more reasonable. And now you have another expert to kind of rely on as you make your decision. You could postpone it to see what other information comes forward. I think the point Josh is making though is once they have submitted the application, then if there's a statutory, you know, you have to do it within a certain amount of time. And if, if the applicant asks for a final decision in writing according to state code, I don't have it in front of me, but I think you have to make a final determination within 120 days. So I mean-
And they pull the ripcord, you know?
Yeah, so you have some time. It's not like if you're feeling uncomfortable, you can't say, well, hey, we need to think a little bit more about this and, and you won't necessarily get in trouble.
That's our default. Whenever we do have new information or it's too complex, it's a, we're just, we're not going to, we, you know, we're going-
Yeah.
We're going to wait for more information before we make a decision.
Yeah. So you can wait and you can forward it to the county commission because it's, you feel it's, you know, it's now a C3 or whatever, you know?
Yeah.
Hopefully never C4, but right, it doesn't get that far, but-
That would be very expensive.
It would be, so.
So can you think, do, do you know any examples where somebody has, um, applied for a conditional use permit and, and they, none of the, something couldn't reasonably be mitigated? So they, sorry, can you think of anything?
So they outright denied it?
Yeah.
I don't know that I've ever seen that in the case law. I think the, the language of the conditional uses and the, I know it says that potentially that could happen. If, so this is, yeah, two Cs, this is 1727-8506-2C. If the reasonably anticipated detrimental effects of a proposed conditional use cannot be substantially mitigated by the proposal or the imposition of, I just got an email, they cut that off, of reasonable conditions to achieve compliance with applicable standards, land use authority may deny the conditional use. So even in that situation, you have discretion. It doesn't say shall deny, it just says you may deny it. But everything I've found in the case law says, you know, there, there is, there, there are ways you can mitigate.
So our default is how do we, how do we mitigate? It's a permitted use as long as we can-
A conditional use as long, yeah.
It's, yes. It's conditionally permitted as long as we can, um, impose conditions that would reasonably mitigate any detrimental effects.
Right.
I was trying to restate it in other words, but you can't, you have to use that, that language.
It's almost that, yeah.
Because noise was the biggest factor.
Noise and traffic.
Noise and traffic.
Yeah. Parking down that driveway, which, that could be a condition.
Yeah, and as Josh was saying, parking is like right in our code of, you know, it's something that should be considered. Um, and is, and is considered reasonable, right? It's a reasonable con- condition to require certain amounts of parking.
How have you restricted noise before in your condition?
Through time of use. Um, but never to-
Yeah, hours of operation.
Never to a, a, like a, a level of so many decibels.
We did, we did the decibel one of the woodworking place.
Yeah, we did the one down there in-
That's when I was-
In Mountain Green.
Mountain Green.
Because it backed, uh-
Backed it.
Backed up against the residential lots.
Was that a conditioner or did, did they do a measurement?
No, we, we did decibels, like 80 decibels at the property line or something like that.
So how did you come up with that? What, what expert?
I can't remember how we-
What study did you use?
Remember, I remember the discussion, but I remember-
There was one that was ever dealt with, I can't remember.
I thought, though I remember it, is that they, they did the measurements for us to provide evidence of how a lot of it-
Yeah, it seems like something like that.
And where do you measure it from?
I think the applicant, I, that's why I-
It was at the property line, I remember making it-
I thought the applicant just provided that to us to say, hey FYI, this is the measurements.
The decimal level.
These are the measurements we took. And then there was a discussion about how it relates to international, like OSHA, OSHA standards for certain noise levels.
Yeah, it was OSHAs what we used.
I don't think we did the condition. I thought it was, it was just part of, part of the discussion.
No, I think we put a condition.
Well, they had the numbers for us and then we put it as the condition.
And I think on the animal one that you talked about, decibels, I don't know if you put a condition on it.
Which one, the crematorium?
Yeah, you know, that one.
It's okay, it's not too soon anymore. No, for noise, did we?
I thought you did talk about noise here, but I don't know if you included it.
Well, I remember that one, so much, but I do the other one.
The woodworking shop.
And on the noise, I mean, maybe if it's, if it is that issue, it might be something to put in our code so that there is something you're relying on beyond-
Right. It's not, it's not in our table.
No, we, a noise ordinance would be good. I've had a couple people ask me if there is one where a neighbor put in a motocross track in their backyard. It was going at all hours.
Should go back in luck. It's probably six, seven years ago.
So it'd probably be a good idea to have one.
Yeah. And, and so then that would give you some authority or something.
Or had some management-
It could give you some authority, right, that you could rely on-
Right.
Code section where you say, well, our code allows for this. And so-
Right, I think it'd be a good idea.
It's not even a condition, it's just part of our code and we're just pointing you to, I mean, I guess it would, it could be a condition, but it's, it's not going beyond what is applied to everyone else-
Right, so then it becomes-
Through our code.
Josh can add that to a list of ordinances to-
Well, we spent a lot of time on light.
We spent a lot of time on light, but noise, it would be good to address noise.
Okay. I don't think that was a great reminder, a good discussion. I'm glad I'm learning more and more. Any other, any questions? All right. Thank you very much, as always. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Um, on to item number four. Anything for us?
I don't have any.
No? Anything for staff? Almost making it go too quick. Um, I assume you got all my input per-
Yep.
Thanks. Yeah, having said that, we'll, uh, take a motion to approve the planning commission meetings for January 26th.
Sumo.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Sumo.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned. That's just part of our culture then, or that's just how we do it.
I like it.